Nice.
Wait, who did that?
Frank.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, four and two now.
That's false.
Because all they have is four wins last year total, if I'm saying, maybe not even.
They're leading the false sports right now.
Yeah.
Football team's doing alright.
Forty one.
Four hundred forty points goes down, Brooke.
They're doing good, and they were right in it. The second game, it was right there. And then, you know, just some,
Everybody got hurt.
Some, yeah, some tides turn, they got hurt, they lost their quarterback and. You know, maybe if that goes down, they'd actually win. Right, Jeff?
You never know. That's the, oh, oh, that was brutal.
He just finally.
I just remembered what you said there. Where is it? Uh, he said, if that goes down, you guys might have a chance, bring up two for Russia. Bro. Uh.
It makes my day.
I know.
When the Cowboys lose and the Eagles win.
That was so, I'm the complete opposite. Dude, that was makes my day. It's so frustrating. Last week, because you had the forty Niners and the Cowboys both.
I know.
But then the Eagles kind of crap the.
And well, they, they had the game on, and it's like to rip, yeah, that.
Yeah, that was brutal.
I, I, I really wish I turned that game off when I thought they had it wrapped up, because then I couldn't fall asleep for an hour. After he dropped the pass. And the TV almost got broken.
Oh. We're bottoming out here. Is that everybody? Yes. Evening, Ronnie, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Shall we, uh, shall we keep going here? Yes. Alright. Uh, good evening. The meeting of the South Hunter Regional Board of Education is called the border. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December the sixth, twenty twenty-three. By posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Larco, borough of Stockton Township, to West Hamwell. And advertised in the Hunter County Democrat and Trenton Times newspaper. Understand for the flexing. Realization.
The United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Jennifer Batsworth. Martha Dennis.
Here.
Gina DeShetty.
Yeah.
Frank Kings. Kevin Kowalski.
Here.
Michael Strauss. Ronnie Tom Marino.
Here.
And Galen.
Here. Okay. Uh, recognition of the. Yeah. Uh, my. Yeah. So, I just want to acknowledge, and unfortunately, the individual that I'm going to recognize had a last minute conflict, can email a report to me and couldn't come. But I do want to still recognize him and, and a couple of folks. Um, I'm hoping some of you saw this week. We posted on our social media and had sent out the parents that last Tuesday, we launched our school store, the Eagles perch. Um, and if you didn't get a chance, I actually opened it up right outside in the hallway here. I'd love for you to take a look at it during the break. Uh, our board members as well. So. You know, there's a lot of folks that took part in making that happen. Um, one individual that I wanted to recognize specifically was Mark Curry from Nies Lumber. So, over the years, Nies Lumber has donated a lot of different things throughout the district, uh, talking to our athletic director, Mr. Miller, they, they've donated athletic uniforms to our teams, a scoreboard table for our basketball program. And then for our school store, they actually donated all the cabinets, where you can see in there. Uh, and it's a lot of it. So, um, I really wanted to recognize Mark and Nies Lumber. Just because they are a constant supporter of our district in a variety of different ways. Um, and, you know, just go above and beyond, quite honestly, of supporting the district. So, and with that, I also wanted to just recognize, so part of that project was also funded by LAF. But we know that we hear things from them each and every month, and obviously, they played a role in it. Um, Flemington Granite actually donated the marble countertops in, in the, uh, school store, so that's pretty cool. So I wanted to give them a shout out. And then I wanted to give a shout out really to the four, um, staff members. Who are facilitating and came up with the idea, created it, and then actually brought it to light now with our kids working in the store. And that was Dan Rubelo, Toby Jeffries, Jessica Louie, and Becky Angela. So they are supervising it, um, and we have a variety of different students that are working in the school, school store. And it really truly is an opportunity for some of our student population to develop some real life business skills. Because not only are they running the store each and every day, um, but they're also doing all the behinds, the scenes of the inventory. How they're going to organize a store, pricing, all kinds of different things. And then they're actually doing the sales and taking online orders in as well. So you could obviously go up to the counter and buy things at the end of school day. Eventually, it will also be open during the lunch period for apparel. They're going to have all kinds of school apparel that will be available. But then there's also orders that come in online where they have to fill those orders and have them ready for when folks are going to go and pick them up at the end of the day. So. Um, great life skills, and we've really been able to partner, you know, a diverse group of our students. To work in the school store. So we're really, really excited about that. So I did want to acknowledge it, where, you know, if you get a chance, like I said, pop by, you'll see all the different things that are available. And it really, they've done a phenomenal job, and it's been a, kind of a heartbeat of the school over the last week since it opened up. So, uh, just kudos to everyone involved. Very good. Um, next up, the reporter, the student representative of the board. So I have, we do have one. I have, I have a feeling he may not be here till seven. So. Yes. Um, so then that comes, that's for the reason why I'm here at six thirty, and that's the interviews for candidates for the vacant Lammertso board seat. Um, we have two candidates, Noel Davis and Anna O'Leary. Um, I understand that you've discussed the procedure with. Yep, we flipped the coin, um, we communicate in advance. So Anna will be going first. So we're going to invite Anna up to the podium, and Erin, I'll take you into the faculty lounge, and then we'll kind of flip flop after. Anna, good evening. Thank you for coming up and being with us this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I'm going to start off, we're going to go around, everybody if they have a question for you. Uh, the questions are the same for both candidates. Um, but I will start off the questioning, and I'm just going to ask you, you can tell me a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this school.
Absolutely. Um, so I have a, um, few degrees, which is nice, I guess. Um, but I currently work, uh, for Washington Crossing Historic Park. I am their historical horticulturist. Um, which allows me to incorporate, um, my anthropology background along with my herbal medicine background. And create sort of a hybrid learning tool for the public to exchange and understand how colonists would have planted plants. Um, the importance of them, especially during the time period of seventeen seventy-six. Um, but I also have a private business of my own called A Garden in Time. Um, where I sometimes focus on historical horticulture, um, but also do some more standardized landscaping, uh, native restorations. Um, but for me, and my personal interest in coming to this, um, really comes from having my ten-year-old son, who's in the district. Um, just entered into fifth grade at our middle school on location. Um, and I just feel that, um, I've watched him and his, uh, fellow students go through a lot of changes over the last, well, really, since their very beginning in education. Um, and I think I'd like to be a part of sort of defining how things can change or how they change, as we know they're going to, right? The developing middle school, and I'd like to be a part of that, to just sort of feel that his community is represented as well. Um, but I also have a deep love of education. Um, I do work pretty closely with children through my work at the park. Um, so I've really just sort of grown to enjoy the environment that they already create.
I know. Um, let's follow your lines.
Hi, Ronnie. Um, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
I guess a lot of it would be a learning experience for me is to see how it actually goes. Um, but based on, you know, sort of what my preconceived notion is. Um, that it would be to sort of, that the school will operate through, um, deal with sort of, um, uncertain changes. For instance, I know probably during the pandemic, it was probably quite a lot of involvement on your part to sort of set the direction and see how your district and your community would then be able to progress. Um, through that, right, in the healthiest way possible. So, um, that's what I would like to see, I guess.
And. Their experiences or skills I prepared you to serve as a board member?
Um, well. I have not served on a board before, but currently through my work at the park, where I've been there for a decade. Um, I work underneath the, quite a large board of directors. Um, so, and quite closely with them as well. Uh, I know that my role as a horticulturist sometimes seems like it might set me into one particular role, but um, I do a lot of grant writing, fundraising, and various other community sort of, um, events that we work very closely with the board. Um, and I am also very close with the executive director. And she constantly sort of feeds me into the understanding of how the board system really works. Um. So yes, while not having ever been on one, I have worked intimately with one for the last ten years.
Good. Thank you for coming out.
Hello, Kevin.
How are you? Uh, how does a school board balance needs providing quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden?
I'm so sorry, can you say that?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's kind of like, almost like a two parts.
It's sort of a two-part question, I thought.
How does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to local taxpayers' burden?
I think as a school board, your first interest really is the children's community. Um. I do understand that there is a need to co- cooperate and work with the taxpayer, feel that their needs are represented as well. Um, but I, I do feel that the focus and the real intent is to make sure and ensure that the children come first. So for lack of experience with, uh, having to deal with the situations that you've all dealt with, with the taxpayer community. I think that, you know, what would feel right to me would be to sort of make sure that I wasn't really, um, losing sight of what I thought was really the focus of the school board.
On that, what do you see as the major issue or issues facing our school?
Well. Don't know if I can really speak strongly to what I think that would be. Um. I know that there are struggles probably again with the rearranging, changing of schools, locations, and all of that. Um, I would see that maybe as being the number one probably currently. While I'm sure there are other long-term ones, like Kevin had suggested, balancing the taxpayers' input. Um, and making sure that their needs are addressed as well, that they're feeling that something is coming out of their financial investment. Um. And, you know, I think, I think those things can be, can be worked and balanced pretty well. So challenges aren't particularly challenges if you can come up with a great way of addressing how to bring everybody in.
Back to me, and that is a great segue into this question. How is you, how would you as a board member work with the superintendent and other board members? And there are different opinions on different topics.
Uh, very used to the group dynamic when it comes to coming to a solution or a direction. Um, and I can be opinionated in very good fairness, but I am also a quality listener. Um, and I am a hundred percent very willing and able to admit that perhaps my original idea was incorrect or wasn't in the best line, and I will obviously then bear with what I think again is somebody else's wonderful opinion that, um, was different than mine. I'm very open to sort of diverse understandings. Um, again, I work with a lot of different personality types in the field that I'm in, um. And, you know, and I even work with my private clients, you know, sometimes they have interests that are not in line with my interests, but they make it work, right? As long as your goal is set to the same ideal, I think, then it makes it easier for people to work together.
Pointed, you'll serve in this position until twenty twenty-six, the reorganization meeting at that time. Which typically takes place the first week of January. Would you consider, or are you considering running in November twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-six? Twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
Election to extend your term?
Um, well, so I think part of what appealed to me about being able to come into a empty term seat. Um, was the ability to feel it out for myself for a few months, hopefully be a valuable contributor. Um, but also wanting to evaluate my own personal life schedule. Making sure that I was available and that I could put time into this board, um, if I were chosen. If I found that at the end of that term, that those were struggles and balances that I couldn't find, you know, to be able to maintain. Um, then I would be able to make a better, well-informed decision at that time. Um, but if I decided to move forward, I do have to say, I'm, I'm not a particularly political person, so I don't picture myself campaigning, as they say, but I would be absolutely willing to run again. Yeah.
Bring it back to me.
Okay.
Um, so the board has several committees.
Yes.
And we meet once a month.
Yeah.
That's how we operate basically, a lot of discussions are done in committee. Um, so these include personnel, curriculum, policy, finance and facilities, school and community. Um, of the, of that list of five committees, um, which do you think would be the best fit for you and why?
I think that I'm a very, very flexible and adaptable person. I would say that if you called those resources on, those references on my resume, you'll find that they stay the same. Um, I'm willing to fit into wherever the need is, and I do think that I can provide a good contribution to any of those categories. So I, I don't really feel yeah, that, that one would be a better fit than another, even though I may find out that one is. But, um, yeah, I think I could easily feel comfortable in any of those subcommittees.
That's the end of our prepared question. I do usually end with one, one final question. And that is the traditional interview question. What haven't we asked you that you want to tell us?
Well, um, I mean, I guess just to speak for myself a little further, um. I do really think that I'm, uh, pretty solid problem solver. And I think that that's probably what I could bring to this the best. Um, not saying there's lots of problems that need to be solved, but it is kind of what you are doing, right? Solving the issues as they come up. Um, I have a creative and flexible mind, and I like to solve these problems. I like to look at things from new perspectives. Um, and, you know, sometimes it's a unique take, but I think it, it helps, you know, think outside the box.
Boy, Anna, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, uh, illuminating and interesting. Appreciate that, uh, opportunity to, to hear from you, talk to you.
Thank you.
Um, so I think, uh.
I'm going to cut my stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. Part of the next, you ask me a question. That way each of the layer of folks gets the best question. But, this is free on. Just want to make sure that. Want to make sure the level of practice on form. Well, the foot of the table.
Hello.
Good evening, Erin.
Good evening.
So again, thank you for coming in.
Of course.
Coming out once again. So obviously, you're familiar with the, uh, with the process here. Um, we're going to go around, and each ask, uh, some questions. Uh, they are the same questions for both committees. And I, I will begin. So, um, my first question is, uh, tell us a little about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the board?
Sure. Um, so why am I personally interested? Uh, first and foremost, I have a daughter in the school system. She's in eighth grade. And she's been in the school system since she was in kindergarten. So obviously, I have an interest in terms of her education and, and, um, her school being a place of, um, learning and sports and socializing, not in that order for her. And, um, I've also been a public servant for the majority of my career as an attorney, so I understand the need for public service, um, from serving on a board like this, all the way to, um, dedicating your career as a public servant. So I think that in terms of what our obligation is, as, as generally as a citizen, this is one of them. Um, and that I care about the types of decisions that are in the board's hands. Um, from policy decisions and recommendations and, and, um, programming, I think that uh, the support and oversight that the board provides to the school district is really important. Um, and I believe in public discourse and governance. So I think that through my career as a, an attorney for the state of New Jersey, I really learned a lot about the torturous regulations, but I also learned a lot about different boards that exist and the benefit of those boards to whether it be their agencies, which is what I was doing, or, um, be to the school district, that those boards sit with certain amount of, of authority and information. And, um, I believe in that public discourse, although it's often difficult, and I believe that, um, people, I, you know, understandably, this isn't an elected position at this point, because I'm filling a spot, but that it be an elected position that, you know, people put forth of candidate that they're most interested in supporting their positions that they want to support through the school and maybe even a communication the other direction from the school to the community. Um, and I also would say that why I would be an asset to the board beyond those obvious personal kind of commitments and reasons why I'm interested relate to, um, my basic training as an attorney. Um, I'm actually just trying to appeal to some of the board members, frankly, you know, just kidding. Um, I am a, you know, I was an attorney for the state of New Jersey for twenty-five years. I retired in November. And, um, my training both as a, as a lawyer technically, as well as being a trial attorney. Um, really taught me some valuable lessons about, um, how to, to deal with conflict in a way that's more practical and, um, involves not just asserting your position, but hearing what the other positions are and understanding them to a point of, of their true nature. So I think that that deliberative kind of thought process that lawyers are inherently trained and required to do. Uh, it creates an asset and would be an asset to the board in terms of how to look at certain problems and consider certain solutions. Many would think that's the opposite, and it may not be an asset, uh, because lawyers don't always have the best reputation. But considering I worked in, you know, child welfare, I, I really didn't have much, um, lawyering experience outside of state government. So. Um. I think also I, my career specifically foc- focusing mostly on child welfare um, gave me an opportunity to understand what school means to kids. Um, not just seeing it for my own child, but if you think about, um, an example would be the change in law for foster kids where there used to be a rule that said this was state law, not the problem for you, except you probably had to deal with the transportation. Um, the state law used to say, well, wherever the foster parent lives, the kid goes to that school district. But the national movement really showed that maintaining kids in their own school district where they knew people, they knew teachers, they had established days would be good for those kids. So even if they were moved from their homes and placed sort of in a different community, they were able to maintain their other community of school despite being out of their own home. And that shift for foster kids was pretty amazing. So to understand what effect school can have on, on particular kids, whether it be kids who really struggle because they're coming from homes with, you know, with, uh, challenges and, and are in maybe a placement type of circumstance. That's a dramatic extent of it. But I think the other end of that is to understand how much school can affect children generally in our community. So it's not just the kids are doing great at sports, but it's the kids who are struggling or the kids who are not as incorporated into the social milieu of the, the world. So my perspective is it's an important role, and so I am interested in serving in it. But I, that I answer you.
Um, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
The primary work? Um, I think it's pretty well established, you know, to provide policies and, um, policy recommendations to the school district and, and sometimes create um, and ask for those to be then carried out by the superintendent and the staff that, that, um, he or she employs. Um, I think the board also has several other roles in terms of the budget and, um, uh, and an obligation to really kind of evaluate the best interests of the community that they're serving as well as the kids that they're serving in making policy recommendations, budget, um, policy recommendations and decisions. As well as, um, budgetary kind of, you know, what we've seen a lot of recently has been, um, you know, the school, the new school buildings and, and, and as I know, the, the new, um, preschool um, influx of money from the state and how that kind of changes the, the map. So I think kind of generally, I see it as a, a director, um, and supervisor really of the superintendent. But not, um, a, a day-to-day, um, hand in that one.
Erin, what particular experiences or skills in the prepared you serve in the board?
Well, I think I kind of covered that in the beginning, so I don't want to repeat it or belabor it, but I think that, um, generally, my skills from a human perspective are pretty good, uh, when it comes to understanding different sides of a story or different posi- positions of things. Um, even if I, if I see something in a particular way, I think I'm pretty good at listening and hearing people and what they have to say. Um, and so when you're the go-between, sometimes between the community and the school system and can serve in that role. Um, I think that that is a positive attribute for, for, for a board membership. And as I said, I think that my commitment, uh, to the community, uh, is another example of that, both being a public servant for the majority of my, actually for my entire career as an attorney, as well as, um, you know, as a person who definitely considers, um, the decisions and the day-to-day policies enacted by the board is an important influence on what my daughter gets as a member of the community, but also what the community gets generally, uh, the, the community of the school, the kids in particular, as well as the teachers and the staff. Um. And so I think my bent towards public service is definitely a strong suit in that situation. I'm also a volunteer for Meals on Wheels in Hunterdon County. Um, and I do other things that affect the community in a positive way that I think can be reflected on the board as well.
Erin, thanks for coming out again. Appreciate your time.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Uh, how does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education to the students with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden?
Oh. I don't have the time tonight to answer that one. That's pretty much the golden question. Um. I think there is a balance there for sure, and I think people see that balance as different. You know, where they see the, the, um, the balance as coming to equal is very different depending on who they are. Um, so I, I, I don't think that's an easy. I feel I can't quite provide you with a direct answer, except that when it comes down to it, and you're dealing with a decision that's big, that's going to affect the taxpayers' interests, as well as the particular kid who might be going to the school. You, you, you know, as, as a inherent person, you have to listen and wait to both of those. But I do think that different people see that pretty differently. If, that's sort of a roundabout way of answering it. But I'm also trying to be direct in that I don't think there's an easy answer to that one.
Thank you.
Hello. What do you see as the major issue or issues facing our school?
Um, well, I think there are a couple. There's obviously, you know, I'm just aware of generally the influx of the preschool money and, and, you know, the benefit that that would obviously provide the community, but the challenges that the school board presumably in the school have to struggle with to accommodate that. Um, I'm a big believer in preschool education, and I know that it really sets kids up for success in the community. So. Um, I also think that, um, you know, the transition to the new schools is going to be a significant thing that is going to happen within the community. So. And I think the final thing that's sort of tied in with that really is that I know is happening just as apparent and standing on the outside. It's really not just attrition, but sort of like the movement of the teachers and the, the changes the teachers have been facing. And how to balance those things against the need for the teachers to make the changes or how. And how to balance those things against the need for the teachers to make the changes or how quickly to make the change. So I think that that is an issue that I've heard about a little bit on my own as and it's kind of seen. Um whether it be from, you know, students or seeing the attrition or whatever it may be. So I think that's an issue that's facing the board or or will be. Yeah, I mean, I I think I would, I'm a very direct person. Uh I don't know that, I can't just say, well, I'm a lawyer, so I can do it. I think it's a little bit more than that. So I would say my communication style is very direct. I don't hide the ball. I'm not, I don't really kind of um speaking. One one out of one side of my mouth and then try to please someone else on the other side. I'm pretty direct about what my position is on things or where I stand, but I'm also a pretty good listener in terms of opposing points of view. And I think that's something we're suffering from right now in society generally. But I do think that I'm capable of it and I and I have that to offer to the community, both of Lambertville. Um particularly because I would be a representative of Lambertville, but generally. Um so I would handle conflicts directly and non-aggressively. I think I'm I'm able to balance direct with. But also hearing people's perspectives um and and taking them into consideration and into, you know. Into my final determination, if that's fair, or vote.
Right. If appointed, you'll serve in this position until our twenty twenty six reorganization meeting, which typically takes place at the first week in January. Would you consider or are you considering running in the November twenty twenty five election to extend your term?
I would consider it, yes. I am not making a determination right now. Um and I can't say either way, but I would say I'm definitely considering it. Interest mine, having interviewed at a previous um.
Okay, so the board has several committees that meet once a month. They include personnel, curriculum, policy, finance or facilities and school and community. Which committee do you think would be the best fit for you and me?
Um I think policy would definitely be a good fit for me. Um I think my background in child welfare as well as understanding sort of the effects of. You know, the everyday functioning of the school and the policies that underwrite it are an example of why I would be good at that. Or why I would be interested in it and good at it. I think the other two um are a little bit less exciting, but perhaps my skills will be well used in. And thus, I'm being a public servant, I would say negotiations probably um that I know is on the board in terms of. Just my my background and my skills as well as um probably personnel, um partially because my interest is noted earlier.
Well, that uh that does it for our prepared question, but I'll so I'll ask you uh one final question. And there's the classic interview question. What is it that we have not asked you that you would like to tell us?
Oh, I would thought you were going to tell me what's my, what did I used to say to people? What's your area of growth? I don't, that's a silly, um. I I think you've asked all the questions. I think many of you know who I am in the community just because of being in the community. And I don't think that I we've left a stone unturned tonight in terms of who I am generally as a person, so I'm comfortable where we stand.
Erin, thanks again for coming out.
Yes, thanks.
And uh in the meantime, the board is going to uh go into an executive session now and. Um that executive session will hopefully be less than ten hours, hopefully less, hopefully much less than that. We don't know, we will see, we see how it goes, but uh we will be coming back. We will be conducting our regular business uh once that ends. So with that, I will ask the board for a motion to go into executive session. Thank you. And Kevin with a second, thank you. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, so we're just gonna step down the hall. Feel free to. Feel free to check out the school store if you want to. We're gonna break, break out to the right in the hall.
I mean. Hi.
Yeah.
I don't know. I was gonna say. There's now. We've lost the marriage. But I. And you were coming in. You can have a. And you're. Eighteen hours. But that's. All this time. I don't know. All of this. Like fifty. You know. Yeah. I think. They could go out. And it's. Very. But we got. You know. You're. Which. A lot. Doing. It's. I went out and said. I think. That's. Perfect. But. I'm. Yeah. I think. I'm. But. I think. That's. What. Those. But. I'm. So. I'm. This. Uh. I think. I think. I think. That. That. I think. I'm. The most. And that. I think. That's. Everyone. Yes. My. Anywhere. She. But. People. That. Oh. I think. She. Yeah. But. Some. That's. He has. And he. All. Of course. And we. Now. And I'm. I'm. Now. Sometimes. So. When they have. They. They probably have. That. They want. They. You know. I feel. That. I think. I think. They have. My. I have. Right. Yeah. But. But. And. In the. In the. And that's. And that's. First. To. People. That. I don't. So. And. That's. Um. I hope. You know. That. I got. I got. Um. For the. For the. That. Much. Well. She. Yeah. And then. Also. Said. Your. That. That's. Exactly. But I would. I think. The. Yeah. It's. The. I would say. I would. I would. Yeah. 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 And. And. Yeah. It's. I think. It's. Actually. Very. I think. So. No. I'm. They're. They're. Yes. I don't know. I think. So. And. And. Is that. They're. Very. Or. Only. Really. Well. Well. You know. It's kind of. Very. Very. I think. It's. That. Well. Right. I'm. I have. Nation. And. Yeah. You. Very. You said. You. Very. 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 So. So. She's. Very. Bottom. And. I don't. I don't. I'm. I'm. Because. I'm. 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 But. Yeah. And. I'm. 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 Especially. So. Yeah. 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 I'm. 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 And. I. I'm. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. Um. I think. I'm. 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 Probably. I think. Um. We. First. So. Yeah. We. We. So. And. They are. They are. And. Everybody. And. I don't. I don't. We. My. My. Uh. Well. One. I don't. I don't. So. I'm. I have. No. I don't. Yeah. Well. Yeah. I don't. I have. I don't. But. Right. 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 Okay. I got. I got. The. The. As a. I think. Sure. They look like. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. But. 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 Yeah. I have. I'm. And. 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 I'm. But. 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 And. Exactly. I. I. But. Not. But. But. One. I don't. Be able to. Pretty. And. So. I. But. But. I don't. Yeah. So. Yeah. How. So. I. 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 We. All. About. You. I. 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 So. Yeah. I'm. I'm. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. We. We. About. Even. And. I'm. 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 Maybe. Not. But. I'm. I think. It's. The. So. It's. I. I don't. I don't. I don't. So. But. So. But. Lots. But. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. You know. That. So. I don't. And. Yeah. 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 I think. Yeah. But. But. They're. Yeah. I think. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. Well. Um. Well. Also. Better. I think. That. We will. Make. So. Who. I think. I don't. Yeah. I don't. Especially. Or. Check. Yeah. Yeah. I don't. I don't. Part. That. We. That. Yeah. That's. So. I. I had. I had. But. You know. When. 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 Different. And. And. You know. I was. Long. Right. With. Operation. I think. I think. That. I thought. We. We. I don't. I think. I think. Something. That. We. And. I think. It's. But. Maybe. Yeah. Yeah. In. So. Yeah. Yeah. But. I think. I think. I. I. I don't. I don't. I think. I actually. I'm. 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 Just. I don't. It's. It's. Actually. I don't. I don't. I just. Sound. That. I think. I think. I think. I don't. I don't. I don't. I want. You know. I don't. Okay. I'm. Yeah. 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 I mean. Right. But. I'm. I'm. Yeah. My. But. If. We. I think. I'm. Actually. We. I don't. I don't. I'm. I. We. We're. Only. Inter. With. I don't. Correct. I said. Really. Twenty. Days. So. I. I always. I. If. If. You. You. Crazy. You know. You know. You. 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 Yeah. Yeah. Totally. So. We. 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 Are. Four. No. We're. You know. I mean. So. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. It's like. We. Well. I will. Always. You know. That. It's. Yeah. It's. Crazy. It's. It's. I'm. 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 I. 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 Yeah. Yeah. There's. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I mean. I'm. 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 But. Yeah. But. Yeah. Yeah. We. We. Yeah. 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 But. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. Yeah. They. 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 I'm. I have. Heather. So. For. But. I don't. I don't. Yeah. I thought. She. I. I. I'm. I'm. We. The. I'm. 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 I don't. I don't. No. I'm. 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 So. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. 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 I don't. I don't. They. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. I'm. But. I'm. 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 They. She. I'm. I'm. Not. Thank. That's. You know. I'm. 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 I think. I'm. Okay. I'm. 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 Also. I'm. 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 Oh. Yeah. I'm. 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 Well. Yeah. I'm. I'm. Right. That's. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. 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 I'm.
Need a motion to come out of the executive session at seven thirty P M. To move by Ronnie, second by, by Kevin, thank you all in favor.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have had a chance to deliberate on our candidates, so with that, I will open nominations for the the vacant board seat from Lamontville. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Aaron O'Leary.
Right, very good. Are there any other nominated? With that, I will, we will close the nominations. And we will have a roll call.
Mark Them.
Yes.
Gina Shay.
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Ryan Tomlin, no?
Yes.
Then go.
Yes. Okay. With that, congratulations, Aaron. You'll be able to join the board at the next month's meeting. Anna, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. In fact, I'd like to take a five minute recess right now. And just gonna have an opportunity for everybody to get up, stretch their legs, and then we'll get back to our regular business. Okay, so we will, we will begin at seven thirty. That seems impossible. Okay. Michael, Slough, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
So Gina, how do you know?
I gave him a hard time in that.
All right, we're gonna be back in session now. And so we will begin with our we will begin with our report of the student representative of the board, Luke Craver. Welcome, it's the first meeting, Luke will be a hard to believe senior this year, so what do you have?
But before you go, I'm gonna do a little introduction.
Please do.
That's okay. So we are pleased to welcome our newly appointed student representative, South London Board of Education, Lucas Craver. Lucas is currently a senior who has participated in our marching band since seventh grade, where he plays the flute. He's also a member of our bowling team, concert band, and all of our, and all of our school musicals. His first lead in our musical was during his eighth grade year in Spain, and last year, he was the lead as Adolfo in The Drowsy Chaperone. Lucas is actively involved in many of our clubs, there's a long list. Okay, Lucas is a member of the art club, the drama club, the environmental club, gaming, GSA, key club, yarn club, literary magazine, yearbook, connect club, Latin Student Union, Peer Leadership, Spanish Honor Society, and National Honor Society. Pretty major. In his time outside of school, Lucas likes to play pickleball. Lucas will be applying early decision to the University of Pennsylvania, where he plans to major in art history and architecture. We are excited to have you as our student rep this year, welcome to the board.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Lucas Craver. Um, so for the student representative, my first subject is On Course. So new this year, all students and staff have transitioned to On Course, so it has changed from our previous online classroom, Google Classroom. And the student body is adapting to this new platform well. We have very good positive feedback. Um, to our sports. So our football team won their most recent game this Friday, I believe forty to fourteen, setting their win-loss ratio to two to one. Freshman Kellen Healy scored two goals, or two touchdowns, sorry. Junior Dayton Rencaski had five carries for seventy-one yards, and senior Ed Cooper had three touchdowns and eighteen carries for one hundred and thirty-four yards. Our boys varsity soccer showed relentless effort and remarkable persistence through their game against Bound Brook on Saturday. Junior Connor Keys has sixty-nine saves in the last six games. Um, girl soccer's next game is Tuesday, or is tomorrow, Tuesday the twenty-fourth, against Gill St. Bernards, led by their leading scorer, Olivia Nunez. Our cross-country has a meet tomorrow at Solbury School against Pennington and Solbergs. They also have a six-five wild safari race on Saturday, the twenty-eighth. And their junior captain, or their captain, who's a junior, Lucy Reed, has won the Petty International and Warren Tech last, in their last Warren Tech match against six other teams. Our field hockey team has a win-loss of three to three. Have Addison Pollockord, junior, has a third, has had thirteen points, which is their lead score for the team. Peyton Pollockord, her sister, has had, has had twelve saves in two games. For the marching band, they have received for second place in the one A division at their last Hundred and Central competition, led by myself and senior lead Liam Syrah. The cheer team continues to uplift school spirit and motivate the Blue Crew to participate in all their cheers and thought activities. The team has had a several immense increase in numbers, which may be the largest cheer team we've had in over ten years. Cheer is led by captains Kelly, Callie Keller, Tascathy Jordan, Azai McNeil, Azuri Scott, and Stormin McCain. Next is our Fairview trip. So our Camp Fairview trip is this week, we leave South juniors and seniors, me included. We are leaving Wednesday and coming back the following day, which is Thursday. We will help organize and lead instruction to these fifth and sixth graders attending. Clubs. Most clubs have started by now and are in session. The most notable club this month has been the LSU, or the Latin Student Union, who are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Students have been on the morning announcements to inform the student body on important influential Latinx speakers. They also have placed Q R codes around the building where students can scan them, and by scanning, it will take you to a virtual presentation on historic landmarks such as the Galapagos Islands and Wahakam. Also, the Lit Mag, the Lit Literary Magazine Club has, well, is looking for more submissions and members to join. So our new school store has had the grand opening this year, which took place on Tuesday, September twentieth, September seventeenth. The Eagles Perch is a student run store, which sells quick and easy to go snacks. It is operated during our flex hours, and it's in partnership with the Connect Club. Back to school night, we've had a successful back to school night again, where many students volunteers have helped parents find their way around the street. For senior activities, last Wednesday, the senior class had a meeting for each member to paint their name on the rock outside located in the Eagle courtyard. They have written their names in the class of twenty twenty-five. Also, the senior sunrise is this Saturday, is this Friday, I'm sorry, September twenty-seventh at six fifteen A M. If you were, if for seniors, please email Ms. S. to, for additional information. And lastly, our homecoming event. So our homecoming football games on twenty-fifth of October, so this is next month, that's a little foreshadow. And the dance will take place on Saturday, the following day, the twenty-sixth of October. Thank you.
Thank you. And so you mentioned the football game, band of Charlotte.
Thank you.
They have time as they always do, and actually, nice to see that Stevens back, and he's been here so. Any other questions for our student representative? You remember going to Camp Fairview as a sixth grader as well?
Yes, I do, and also for marching band when I was seventh grader, we attended.
Oh, nice. Okay, next up, we have our P T O and our L A F update. See this part of the P T O.
Um, so our elections actually ended this afternoon, well shortly before I came here, so I haven't even been able to congratulate anybody yet, but I can announce them now. We did have to change the structure a bit, just because it's, it's a transitional year, and it just finding six people and figuring out the roles that we're going to be playing in the middle school, high school, we thought it was better to just have three for this year. We have amended the bylaws to allow us to do that, and then next year, we can kind of have another conversation of what we think is a good idea, but in elementary school, it'll be Vice President Marcella Rosso, Recording Secretary Trista Lukasiewicz, and Corresponding Secretary Jen Bolvenowski. And then for the middle school, high school level, it'll be Vice President Leslie Darling, Recording Secretary Laura Brewer, and Corresponding Secretary Quinn Hoffman. Um, these, I worked well with all of these people, so I'm really excited to see what they bring. Lee and I have been doing a great deal on our own, and I'm, we're really looking forward to working with everybody and moving forward and growing even better and stronger, so. Um, so congratulations to them. Many community members have been in touch with us with ideas, suggestions, we really appreciate it, so, so keep it coming, but one of them was, a parent had screenshot something from North Hundredan, and they do a parent, teacher, student organization. I brought it up to Tony last week, so he, he said, great, and I think that will help bridge the gap and kind of give people an idea of what our purpose is at the high school level. I, I think it's especially important up here, speaking to students, what they want, what they see our role as, and I mean, the common theme at back to school night was like, a lot of people were like, oh, another committee or another organization, so I, I do want to, I want to get the word out of what we can do, what we can support, and, and all of that, and I, like, our organization, we try, I guess, we fill the gaps where the district and the L A F can't fill, because it doesn't fall within their, within their organizations, but um, so we had our first kids' night out, and we nearly hit our cap, we capped the event at sixty, just because we tried to keep it safe for everybody, and we had fifty-seven kids, so I do anticipate these events selling out, so parents, if you are interested in it, I, I do recommend signing up early, just because to keep, like I said, keep it safe, we try to have like a ten to one ratio, especially with the amount of pre-K kids that we're having in these events, so the next one is Friday, October eleventh. Um, and we will have Ms. Ryan, thank God. She, she is like a godsend to us. We did change the time. Typically, or sorry, when I started these events, we, it was geared towards the, the higher grade, so we had a lot of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Now are the majority of our kids are pre-K through third grade, which makes the dynamic a little interesting, especially like the closer we get to nine o'clock, it's like meltdown city, so we did, we did change the time to six thirty to eight thirty, because we've had to get creative, like, here's my phone, you wanna watch Cocoon Melon, or you know what I mean, like, we just, we do our best, but we, we talk, and we do think six thirty to eight thirty is better, and we did offer a staggered pickup time for parents, because that eight thirty is still late for some of the kids, so we're trying to accommodate people as best we can, but it was really successful, we pulled in after expenses like eight hundred and fifty dollars for, it's not bad for two and a half hours of chaos, so. But we make do, and the kids, the kids have fun, and I mean, it, once you explain the rules and like, they just, it's a, it's a fun time for everybody, but um, next is Scholastic Book Fair, so we're going to have the Scholastic Book Fair at the same week in both buildings at the elementary school and middle school on location, so that's October fourteenth through eighteenth in both locations, and the elementary school will be pre-K through fourth cases, and then the middle school on location will be pre-K cases and a middle school book fair. So that's nice, Scholastic's been working with us and trying to be accommodating to fit the new dynamic of the buildings. We did form a committee, communication on that did go out with like a long list of other communications on Parents Square and from the P T O, but if you'd like to join the book fair, since it is a heavier lift with both fairs being at the same time in two different locations, you can email S H R S D P T O at gmail dot com, and we can put you in touch, Lee will be running the elementary one, and Laura Brewer will be running, which I'm so excited, will be running the middle school one. Oh, for those of you who don't know, she took a week off of work every year for the book fair, so it's like she's like the book fair queen, her and Jen Syrah, so we're very excited to have her back. And then we have trunk or treat, it's Friday, October eighteenth, from six thirty to eight, at the middle school on location. Sign up is on membership toolkit, first trunk spaces and walkers, we did lower the price this year, we kind of talked to community members to see like what the best price point was, so the decision was made to lower the price for walkers and higher the price for trunk spaces. So we hope that that works for us, and we're hoping to get a lot of candy donations, so we can kind of alleviate the financial stress on families, so they can just come and have fun and not worry about it. But we are looking for trunks, so we don't discriminate aunts, uncles, grandparents, high school parents who miss the hustle and bustle of Halloween, so we really desperately need trunks. And there will also be a fifteen-minute sensory-friendly portion. There will be no flashing lights, no loud sounds, nothing scary. We did have a lot of students take advantage of that last year, so it, it is important to continue that. And we do have other exciting things, like potentially a four-H petting zoo, if we can figure it out, so that will be fun. Um, and lastly, I do, so at our meeting a couple weeks ago, someone had asked, why do we fundraise so much, why do we do so many of these events, and the short answer is so we don't have to say no. I don't like when someone, a staff member, or a parent, or somebody comes to us, like, we don't want to say no. So it is important for us to be well-funded, it's important for us to do fundraising and fundraising events. And we're here to support the gaps, so things that we have done historically, the P T O at West Hamwell had done the fifty-dollar gift cards that we had given to every staff member to redeem throughout the year, so that is something, if that's important, that I would like to get back to, but again, that comes with being very well-funded, and we're just not there yet. But we do field day, teacher appreciation, assembly. Randomly, we'll pop in with popsicles at recess to just bring up morale and get the kids excited. Pizza and Kona on the last day of school and teacher appreciation, we don't know if I said that yet, but it's just stuff like that to for the school community. Um, I did also get a question of, do I have to volunteer if I join the P T O, and the answer is, no, you don't have to volunteer, we would love people to volunteer, but um, the dues really help support our operating costs, our operating costs are quite costly, membership toolkit's very expensive, all of our insurance, because now that we're three different buildings, I have to carry an insurance policy for the entire district. So it's, it's really expensive, it's like twenty-five hundred dollars a year, so membership dues cover that, so it is important, so if you can't volunteer, it's your monetary contribution is just as important. And then, just wanna say, we had a wonderful turnout at our first meeting, we were like over thirty people there, which I've never seen that many people at a P T O meeting before. So I hope that people start, keep coming out, our next meeting is October seventh at seven P M. At the elementary school in the media center. And if you can't make that meeting, we do send out the slide deck, we do post the minutes and send the minutes out to members, and we are working on a Zoom link, so, sorry for being so long, but thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate what you do. Do we have an L A F report?
Well, we do. How you doing? Tom Dekker, L A F treasurer. Just a reminder, for anybody that doesn't know, golf day is Monday. So we've seen, received great support from the community. For people, sponsorships, people come out to play, but we still have room at both events, so we've got a family day on Sunday at Harangeland, it starts at three o'clock. Plenty of room there, and we obviously start Monday morning, nine A M. Tea time, so get there early for breakfast. And there will be the putting contest we're gonna do before we tee off, so, you're a putter, get there early. Uh, it's been mentioned a few times, obviously, we helped support the Eagles Perch, you just gotta look at it, looks great. And then last week, we started, at the end of last week, and early this week, we've been meeting with teachers in the high school, middle school to kind of reintroduce ourselves about the foundation, our mission, and to go over the grant process, so we can get more, more and more people involved. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Correspondence, we have, any correspondence we have is on the website with the addendum. So with that, I believe that takes us to approval of minutes from our August meeting. Could I get a motion to approve the regular minutes from the August? Regular, regular minutes and effective minutes, I guess. From the August meeting. Please, my Kevin, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Okay, with that, that takes us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So just a few things I wanna touch upon, but one thing I would just wanna start out with, is just a reminder, if you have not downloaded the Parents Square app, please do so, our percentages continue to increase, I know this was a big theme at back to school night. One big piece of this is that we will be using Parents Square this year for elementary parent conferences to sign up, so information will be going out about that later in the month of October, but if you hadn't had a chance, please do download the app, and then you'll have it on your phone, and everything will be in one place for you for Parents Square. I also wanted to remind the community that tomorrow night, we start our community sessions about preschool, so we have three meetings scheduled that will all be via Zoom tomorrow night, then October eighth at seven P M, and then October twenty-first at nine A M, so for any folks that maybe the evening doesn't work well, we're gonna do a morning one as well. And the goal of that Zoom will be, I'll be providing an overview of some different options that the board has examined as far as preschool facility options, and then really from that, looking to get any feedback, or answer any questions, or ideas that folks may have, we're gonna record all the Zoom sessions, and then the board will have the opportunity to review all that information, probably sometime at the end of October, and then kind of move forward as far as taking that input for their decision making, so again, if you can make one of the meetings, great. You know, if not, I'll be sending them out, posting them on our website, so you can watch it on your own free time to review the information. So I do wanna take an opportunity to share a little bit about our climate survey results, so if you remember, last year was the second year where in the month of June, we put out a climate survey to parents, staff, and students. And obviously, this feedback is extremely important. We got a lot of responses, a lot of information, even much more than we did the first year that we did this. So what I wanna do is just kind of provide, you know, areas that we wanna celebrate, and then areas of focus moving forward, and the school and community committee took, you know, an extensive look at all this information, and kind of edit it out, and what I did was break it down kind of by parents, students, and staff, so we can kind of see what it looks like. So if you look at our parents first, just some areas to celebrate, teacher availability, to meet with parents, and respond to the parents' needs, obviously because of the size of our district, knowing all of our students, and the small class sizes that we possess. You know, four point four was really important, that parents felt that really at all three levels, that there's an adult in each building that my child can go to and trust in the event that there was an issue with a problem that needed help. That's one of the most important things out there for us as a district. The amount of extracurricular opportunities for a small district, the diversity among our student population, the fact that our teachers are committed to helping our students, district communication overall improved at all three levels, you know, elementary, middle, and high school. Teacher availability for extra help, and then parents feeling that their child is safe in our schools. For areas of focus, student achievement and our test scores continue to be at the top of the list. Communication at the school level, so, you know, district level was something that we can celebrate, and then communication hopefully at the, at the building level would improve, we'll talk a little bit about some ideas that we have for that. Overall, kind of student behavior and discipline, that was a common theme across that you'll see. At my child's school, students are respectful of differences in reference to cultural, or personal, or socioeconomic, and religious, so that's an area of focus. Homework came out, really elementary, middle, and high school, of just a lot of questions about homework, so that is something that we'll be taking a look at. More communication about my child's academic and behavioral progress on a regular basis, so many parents shared that, obviously, we have report cards, but that's only one time, you know, marking period, obviously, we have open grade books at, you know, five through twelve, but again, that's kind of after the fact. They really would like to have more ongoing communication and be able to see what students are doing day to day in their classroom, so we'll talk a little bit about that. Student recognition for academic achievements, academic rigor, so our students need challenge academically. Bowling prevention programming, so that's something that we did do a lot with last year, and I think that we have to, you know, You know, do a little bit more on promoting that with our s- school community, so parents are more aware of the type of programming. That we have, increase in the number of course offerings and then student engagement. From our students, just some common themes. My teachers care about me, my teachers expect me to do my best work. If I have a problem, there's an adult in the school that I can talk to, and my school tries to get students to join after-school activities. And then areas of focus, feeling like connectedness to their school, um. Student discipline and conduct and behavior. So again, that was a theme that came out from parents as well. Student engagement, at my school, students think being different is okay, so that's kind of an area of focus, something that we're gonna be looking at. And my school is neat and clean, that came more from our high school, so that's kind of an area that we've already addressed with our facility staff. And then from staff. Areas to celebrate, staff feels safe at school, our staff regularly share and discuss teaching methods with colleagues. Staff cultural differences are respected, so among our staff. Um, and overall, there's a feeling of commitment on improving student achievement. And then areas of focus, more staff input on decision-making. Student behavior and student attendance. So you can see that behavior theme is kind of across the board from students, parents and staff. Making sure staff feels included in the district plan for the future. Continue seeking ways to praise and recognize our staff and then support from parents in the community. Uh, you know, the reality is in this day and age, it's not easy to be a teacher, right? Um, so you know, obviously, you know, our teachers come to school each and every day, and you know, sometimes they carry that burden where, you know, it is, it can be difficult. You know, based on what's going on in our society. So just like next steps and areas that kind of hit on some of these that we've discussed. And some of this you'll see represented in our district goals, which I'm gonna go through next. Student achievement, so. Um, I'll just remind you that at our next board meeting, um, Janelle Lennon, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Will be doing our annual stu- student achievement report, and I will tell you now that we definitely saw gains and we're moving in a positive direction. Which we're very excited about compared to last year's scores, and you'll see that next month. Um, but beyond that, we thought it was really important, and we talked about this at the curriculum committee. That we shouldn't just do a one-time throughout the school year, so we're actually gonna be starting to do like quarterly presentations. Where we share the results of all the internal mechanisms that we're using to collect data on our students and measure their progress. So our goal is to do that four times a year rather than just once in October. So that's something that you'll also see as part of our district goals. Communication about academic progress, so. Luke's mentioned before that we're using a new platform, Encore's Classroom in grade five to twelve. So now by logging into Encore's. Parents do have the ability to see day-to-day what our students are working on in class, so you know. What they did today, what's coming up tomorrow, any long-term assignments. In the past, we've used Google Classroom, it's been challenging because parents have not always had access to that information and they can't see it on a daily basis. Now there's no surprises, you see exactly what your kids see, and you could actually even access. The assignments and the materials and look at them just to kind of get a better handle on what students are working on day-to-day in those classes. So student behavior, so you'll see one of our goals. Um, we are gonna have a district-wide committee this year focusing on student behavior and expectations. And the goal of that committee will be to make recommendations programming-wise for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And kind of looking at a lot of different aspects. Um, when we talk about just student behavior and social emotional learning and what our expectations are, students. What that looks like kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, um, we've had a lot of conversations about. Things that we're calling like a profile of an eagle, so what is a profile of an eagle in an elementary school compared to a middle school, compared to a high school? And what is that that we really wanna kind of continue to put out in our, in front of our students to strive for each and every day and recognize those positive behaviors? So those are all the different things that will be encompassed in that, within that committee, so we'll be sharing more information. Communication at the building level, so we've really been pushing, um, obviously Parents Square and our principals and our school secretaries. Are using Parents Square, you know, more than we've done in the past with our old system, which was School Messenger. And then eventually, we'll be rolling this out to our teaching staff in November, so even more engagement, you know, at the building level with our parents, so. We're hoping that will prove upon some of the information that came out in the survey. Course offerings, so you know, you've probably heard enough about this, hopefully this isn't a surprise, but. You know, we launched our Dolan Roma program and honestly, it was a huge hit at back to school night here. I know that Dr. Luchko, who was here, who's kind of heading that out with Ms. Lennon, had over thirty parents who stopped in the end. Throughout the night, um, so that's awesome. That's something that we're really, really excited about for our students. Student engagement, just looking at a variety of different activities at all three levels. You know, for example, we heard about Camp Fairview tonight, and I know at the five-six, you know, early on, we had an activity where all of our students. Came together and we brought in an outside organization to really focus on an afternoon of problem solving and collaboration. And just bringing kids together, you know, from the different communities to really kind of work together and to get to know each other better. Those are different ideas. We have some ideas at the high school with Flex and different things we're gonna do maybe once a month to kind of bring students together and celebrate each other and. Really bring together that, again, getting back to that connectedness that we're really looking to have as a sense of community. And then obviously at our elementary school as well, so a lot of different ideas that we have. Um, staff input, so that's something that's really been a personal goal of mine this year. With some of the committees and focus groups that we're gonna have and really having the opportunity to meet with our staff and share their feedback. Um, and obviously drive our decision-making moving forward. And then staff recognition, so specifically, I think last year we did a great job at our news bikes, if you hopefully looked at those. Where we featured different teachers, were at the elementary school though, elementary schools last year. Where we did like profiles on different staff members. We didn't do as much at the high school, which I'd like to change that this year. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for not only our staff to read those, but also the community, just to get the better know. Whether it's a teacher, a custodian, a paraprofessional, whoever it is, like. You know, there's some unique skills that folks bring and some really cool opportunities and experiences they bring each, each and every day, so. That's a way to kind of put folks out there. We're hoping, and then the fact that, as Jess mentioned before about a high school PTO. I think we'll go a long way with the high school, and it already has, quite honestly, what the PTO has been able to do just in the last four or five weeks. It's been incredible compared to what's happened in the past at the high school, so that's gonna make a huge difference. Uh, so that's just kind of an overview of the climate survey. I'll put this information on our website tomorrow morning, so it's available. Um, I just wanna reiterate the message, uh, you know, and, and school and community can jump in, like. We put a lot of time and effort. The administration will tell you, we spent a lot of time on this over the summer. So it's not something that we just give for the sake of giving, we dig through it. Quite honestly, some of it's not easy to read, right? But our goal is to grow as professionals and to get better. So each one of us, including myself, spends a lot of time reflecting on the input that we get from all the different constituents that we serve. And how can we get better as a district? That's the goal, so. Um, I don't know, is there anything else more that you wanna say or like from the committee side of it?
Yeah, I think it's, um. As you said, it's very important that. When people give feedback, sometimes they feel like that feedback just goes into the round file, nobody's actually paying attention to. To it, and you can see a direct line between some of the feedback that we received on the climate survey to the district goals and to some of the. The um, action plan items that, that you're describing, and I think that that's really very meaningful. Um, you don't, you don't shy away from negative in- input as well as positive input, and I think that that's what makes our district stronger.
So speaking of our district goals, I just wanna go through the, these quickly. I think it's important to, to bring back the life and make sure we keep. Li- a living document of our strategic plan, right? It's a process that we spent a lot of time on recently. So I don't wanna forget about that, so you'll notice with each one of our goals, I have tied it back to where it fits with our strategic plan. So first of all, goal one, you know, a lot of conversations with the board. And feedback with our administration team about really looking at that data, where the data that really shows that what we're doing is working. So that is directly tied here for goal one, the stru- uh, strategic plan goal one, student experience. And you can see, I already talked about, you know, the bottom bullet that's in bold, but there's a lot of different things that are happening now. We have a new acceleration block. That we've implemented in our new elementary schedule and also in our five-six schedule, and it will eventually be in our five-eight schedule. And this is a block of time where there's a lot of different things that are happening for our students, and it truly is data-driven, right? So the data is telling us what do students need and what supports do they need or what enrichment do they need on the other side of things, so. That's up and running, um, again, really looking at, you know, the academic expectations and the achievement level, so again, looking at that data. The flex block in seventh and eighth has evolved, so it's much more, again, data-driven and using specific programming. You know, to really identify the needs based on our state assessment scores and our benchmark assessment scores. To really provide those interventions for our students during that time. Um, we're using iReady as a diagnostic tool, you know, K through A, which is up and running. Um, various interventions that we'll be utilizing. We continue to put an emphasis on small group instruction, right? All the way across the district, you know, we really don't wanna see a whole gr- uh, group instruction, we wanna really see. You know, teachers breaking down students in the groups and students working with each other and, and the teacher available to help support students and facilitate. And again, as I mentioned before, you know, we will share that progress with you throughout the year, you know, quarterly in our board meetings. District goal two, this is familiar from last year, it's also tied to strategic playing goal one, student experience. So, you know, MTSS is a big buzzword right now in education, a multi-tiered system of support. Basically, what that means is, we wanna make sure that we set up levels of interventions for students based on the data that we have available as well. You know, a tier-one intervention is typically something that happens within the classroom, right? A tier-two intervention can be in the classroom, maybe getting pulled for small group instruction within the classroom, or it could be a pull-out. A tier-three could be, more than likely will be a pull-out, or it's a more intensive intervention, and again. You know, this data drives us so we can close the gaps for our students. And honestly, when we go into state assessment season, which is in May, we kind of know where things are and can predict how students are gonna do. Before we even take the test, if we're doing it right throughout the year as far as utilizing data. Implementation to benchmarks, we gave all of our benchmarks in the beginning of the year for the first time using Encore's assessments. Um, the accelerate block, which I men- mentioned before, and we continue at the high school, the middle school level to run reports. So every other Monday, we run a report and we pick up any students that are below seventy, and we really start to dig in why that is the case. And obviously, that can drive, drive their flex schedule moving forward to close that gap. Because we want all of our students to be passing and above that seventy level, if not, beyond. So again, rather than waiting to nine weeks. We're doing it every two weeks, so hopefully we can prevent any issues by the end of the marking period. Goal three is professional learning communities, um, and this is really where the rubber meets the road as far as data and taking a look at that data. And you know, as teachers mentioned, one of the areas, uh, you know, positive from the survey was having the opportunity to collaborate with their colleagues. This is where that happens, right? Where we really take the opportunity, and now even more than ever, we're in a great spot. Because now all of our third-grade teachers can do that because they're all together, all of our second-grade teachers, kindergarten teachers, fifth-grade teachers. Where before we were across two buildings and to bring that together was difficult, now that they're all in the same place, it's great. So, um, and that will only get better once we open up the middle school, so we're really excited about that. So goal four goes back to that kind of student piece as far as, you know, behavior. Um, and we will be having a district-wide committee, you can see all the different things that we're gonna focus on in the bullets. And uh, it will be facilitated by all three of our principals since this will impact us K through twelve. Um, for twenty-five, twenty-six. And then something that I'm really excited about, that we're doing as part of our March in service, we're dedicating the day to that district wellness. But we have a district wellness day for our staff, all staff. From the beginning of the day to the end, and there's gonna be a variety of different things. Jason Miller's been working on this. We have an employee assistance program that's gonna be providing free support. We've been working with the mayor health, which is our insurance provider. And the goal, we have different workshops that staff can attend, different physical activities that staff can attend. All kinds of different things throughout the entire day. We're really, really excited that that's gonna come together for March. And then finally, goal five, which is tied to strategic playing goal four, facilities, logistic utilization and transition. We still have work to do, right? We, we're halfway there. We opened up our new elementary school, we implemented our new elementary schedule. Now we're getting ready to open up our five-eight school, we have to finish developing our new five-eight schedule. We have to finish developing our staffing configuration for our five-eight building, that's all gonna happen. We're talking about what extracurricular, what co-curricular activities are gonna look like, the board is talking about facilities. What that looks like in reference to field usage. Um, we're also talking about, as I mentioned, preschool and universal preschool and facilities and what's gonna happen with there. So that's all included in goal number five, um, which will be a lot of work that we'll be working on throughout the year, um, as a district and as a board. And then finally, just wrapping it up, so hopefully if you looked at social media today, you saw some pictures that I posted that, that were from this morning. We're still on a target completion date of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and as you can see, things are really starting to come together. Um, where, you know, roofing, you know, and different things and, and the addition on the back with the two levels. Uh, we're making some awesome progress. Our goal from the contractor side of things, um, is to have this building completely enclosed by the end of November. So then everything else, as before we hit the cold weather, um, we'll be working on the inside with all the finished work. With a goal still March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, so this is a primary focus for us. We meet every two weeks on Wednesday with our contractor construction meetings, and we are on schedule and we are making excellent progress. Any questions from the board?
Okay, um, could I ask you to put back the slide with the three dates?
Yeah.
So I do wanna go back, this was the beginning of the, of the session, but I do wanna go back and mention what we're talking about. Uh, preschool and how that is one, how that could possibly work, and soliciting community input. Um, on that preschool program on those days, so I hope that. Uh, people, if you're in the audience or anyone who's watching at home, will consider participating in at least one of those sessions and letting us know how you feel. Um, I did this evening receive an email from our board member Jim Bachelor, who is not here tonight. Uh, and she asked me to read a statement, and since it was related to uh, the preschool, I thought this would be an appropriate time to do that. Um, and she writes, unfortunately, I'm not able to make this statement in person. As we set out this week and hosting community sessions around our preschool facility plan. I want to reinforce how important it is to have community input in order to fully consider all of the options we have to house preschool. We have had one community member address the board nearly every month since March on this topic. And I want to take the time tonight to reiterate and acknowledge some of her concern and also encourage those who have questions to please attend the upcoming thing. In two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Education expanded our elementary school population by accepting preschool expansion aid from the state. Voters at the time had just passed a referendum that would result in three regional school buildings. A pre-k to four elementary school building in Mamrevo with two dedicated preschool classrooms. A new five-eight middle school in West Hamwell and a newly reconfigured high school for grades nine through twelve. As we're communicating to the public, the thirty-three million spent from the referendum promised to bring new programming to the high school. Twenty-first century learning spaces to solve our facilities issues and would bring regionalization full circle. It is irrefutable that the West Hamwell school building was not part of that vision for the district. Understandably, given the options we are now considering, some community members have pointed out this fact. We as a board have a duty to fully consider the long-term impact this preschool expansion will have on our facilities and finances. The community voted for a plan that promised new programming at the high school. Instead of new, discussing new programs for the high school, we are focusing on how to accommodate and support a preschool expansion. That is supposed to be no cost to the district. Maintaining a separate building to account for a shortage of just four classrooms will come at the expense of other things we could be doing in the district. This is why we need to carefully consider the amount of time and money we have already spent on facilities. The last few years and find a way to support preschool without sacrificing other programs or putting us in a hole financially. Moving forward, we as a board need to make every effort to fully analyze any future program expansions. Before applying for or accepting funds, I look forward to having these conversations and working together. To find a solution that truly works for the entire community, and that is Mrs. Backford's saving. So I would say, um, that, uh. So I will let her say what's standing on her tongue, so we will have plenty, there's gonna be lots to talk about over the next month. Um, we have had some conversations internally as a board about these options. We have, we have looked at these options. Mr. Suzo in the presentation. Is going to be presenting some of the pros and cons of the various options and what those things might look like. And so again, I would like to use this opportunity to say to people, folks in the community, please come out, let us hear your voice. Let us know what, what, uh, come and, come and learn, come, come ready to listen, please. And then we wanna hear what you have to say. Um, anything else in the board?
I had a, a statement on a different topic. I was re- realizing that I, I should have said this earlier because I kept thinking of it. Whenever we talk about our district goals and the things that we're implementing, they represent a lot of work from the teachers, so I wanted to express my gratitude for that. Um, going to back to school night, I'm always impressed by who we have here, um, as, as teachers. And it's really been a very positive experience. Encore's Classroom, I know, is something that, that has been very difficult to live. Um, and we're, we, and we've asked a lot of our teachers, but. Um, and where we can, we've asked a lot of our teachers, but I can share a personal experience with that, that I think is really, I hope that everybody um. As this type of opportunity, we talk about enrichment of the kids at education as if it's, you know, it's something that sometimes it's outside of the home. Um, but this gives us the tool, you said that, you know, you can go on and you can see the work that the kids are doing. I specifically looked at it and saw, oh, my daughter had a test in biology, let me see what she, how she did. And I actually could see the questions. And so at dinner, we talked about tectonic plates. And you know, it was a discussion that I wouldn't have been able to have because if I asked her how the biology quiz go, she would have said fine and we would have just moved on. So I know that the teachers are working really hard on this and I, as a parent, appreciate their work because it's helping me to have a tool to support their work. So.
Thank you. Probably agree. Go to the elementary schools, we've played up the same experience. Up here, I love that very much. Any other comments from the board? With that, let's go to the uh, we will open um to the public uh for our first public comment session. Um, as always, uh, we invite you to come up to the podium, um, make a statement to the board. We asked that you try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Um, and uh we will either, we we may or may not uh answer like any statement or question tonight. We may take that back uh for consideration, but we will get back to you with an answer if we don't answer you. So with that, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and bring something to you?
Hello, my name is Andrea Little and I'm a resident of West Stanwell. I would like to address the board with a few points tonight. Uh, first being school choice applications for twenty four, twenty five. The school website references all past dates, including due dates in two thousand twenty three. Yet it also references some current information. Is school choice intended for the twenty four, twenty five year? If so, I'd ask that the administration evaluates the elementary and upper elementary grades with space restrictions. Our classroom size can continue to be acceptable. Uh, yet we do have some space limitations, uh, and we'd like to just ensure that um that's being addressed. Because on the site, it shows all grades are available with twenty one spaces. So I don't know if that's past information or current information. If you do intend to continue with choice. I do ask that um resident students' needs are being met and with all the attention to be a successful learner. I read in tonight's correspondence from a local resident, they wrote that they were having some challenges with their special um education, that there wasn't enough staffing. So I just want to ensure that our residents are getting the staffing that they need and that we're able to accommodate students, the the number of students within our community. Um, preschool, I'm so excited to listen and learn um tomorrow evening. Appreciate that comment. Um, with a lot of questions in the community, it's good to know that school will share the status of the preschool program. I encourage the school to consider reformatting, which is something I know I've brought up probably since March, as everyone has heard tonight. Um, if that was the first time, um, but I can say that um we did promise with the school renovations. I would hope that we could keep these schools age appropriate and keep bundled schools together um and that to be a consideration. And then last but not least, West Danwell Elementary. Last month, I asked a very simple question about to the school administration. And um it began with just asking a question if we've begun thinking about the West Danwell School um proceedings to sell. Um, it was met with an answer, thank you. Um, but then it was also met with sarcastic comment, um, and then a lot of giggles. I asked for professionalism and being a good neighbor to allow our community members the courtesy in asking questions. Thank you very much.
Bye. Is there anyone else who has something they'd like to bring in?
We have one online.
Do. Uh, so it is actually. From. Aubrey Dodson. And could the district possibly look into offering Army ROTC for the high school students at South Hunter Regional High School? So I did do a little research on this one because I saw it earlier today. Um, and what I found out is like in order to establish a junior ROTC. So according to the code, it looks like in order to start a program, you need ten percent of the overall student population to enroll. Or a hundred students, whichever less. So for us, that would be about almost thirty students. Um, so I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we would have that much interest, uh, but it's something that, you know, we could kind of talk about.
I think it would be worth a survey. We do have some, there are several kids who, you know, graduated last year, went into the military. Um, we have kids who have gone into the military every year. In fact, we had back to back years where we had students at West Point and at Naval Academy. And we have two students who are currently, and both of them have now graduated. But we have two students who are in the US Marine Academy, which is also one of the five service academies that have in this country. So it's worth, it's worth the asking question if it would be, I don't think there's thirty kids interested on. Okay, uh, final call on public comment, there will be another public comment period later in the meeting, but. But no one has anything that they'd like to bring to the board right now. Then we will close this period of public comment and we'll move into our many reports and then we will start with the buildings and grounds. Again, Luke, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good job.
Yes. Um, buildings and grounds. Um, Martha and I were meeting. He's the chairman. Andrew, you want to?
I'm happy to do the report. Uh, so we discussed, Mr. Suzo reviewed what he gets night with the school construction update. We also reviewed some of the remaining items for the South Hunter Elementary School council list, uh, so I do items that need to be wrapped up. Um, I presented some information regarding putting solar panels on three of the district buildings. Uh, I had a meeting with the bond attorney and discussed their recommended engineer and the next steps were discussed with the board. Uh, more to come in the October finance meeting regarding that. Uh, so she was, I talked about athletic field expansion and some options there. Uh, with more information to come again in the October meeting and then we also just discussed the upcoming pre-k um expansion meetings that we that we discussed in the. Um, the council listed the total financial reports were off, general fund transfers discussed, contracts that are on for approval tonight. Uh, fairly, fairly late contract about the students that are traveling there this week. Uh, there is some out of district placement contracts, that's the transportation contract. And then there is one um change for the restaurant supply for the middle school, for the kitchen. Uh, there is additional electrical work that was needed and so that is a possibility as well. Uh, travel and writing for auction was posted. The, you'll see from Mr. Albinier, the exception for purchase of goods that we saw last month. There was also joint transportation agreements, um, in us and for other school districts, uh, some of them will be paid a district transfer. Some where they pay up to twenty four students. Uh, memorandum of understanding for the hundred and ninety S C two new space uh at the elementary school. A resolution to transfer funds to cover the construction bills. Acceptance from the LA for a grant for the elementary school, twenty one negro winged star instruments, in the amount of sixty eight hundred dollars. Uh, an annual approval for the nursing plan. That's attached to the agenda and then again, the school construction payment offers additions. Uh, we also discussed about meeting with us company about electric buses. We've discussed before that we would have won at the Cleveland School Bus Energy Grant. Um, we are not going to pursue that at this time, we're going to wait a little bit longer and see what other options present itself. But we also discussed that we did have a bus recently go out of commission that wasn't expected. So we're changing our plan and purchasing a van this year to purchase a new diesel bus, uh, to continue to support our students. There was no cafeteria updates, um, and there was a delay and the bus twenty five camera installation. Uh, due to vendor availability, we targeted in three next three thousand.
Okay, thank you for that comprehensive support. Uh, can I have a motion to approve uh items A through uh. A move like that, a second, second by Mark, but thank you very much. I would just note the one, the one item that's not on A through O, the bus grant that we are not accepting, I think it's interesting to note. Um, that would have not pursued, not pursuing, yes, um, we're just, uh, it was, uh, for, they, it was a eight hundred thousand dollars. That uh toward the purchase of four electric buses. But the four electric buses would have cost approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars each to equip them. And the range on those buses is only ninety miles. And we may have a district where we, our buses go out, pick up students, drop them off, go out, pick up more students and drop them off at the next school. So those two factors, we would be investing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in these buses. That wasn't covered by the grant and the fact that it does not seem to suit our district are the reasons why we're not doing it. So it's not that we don't believe in green solutions, but that is not a green solution that works for our district. Any other discussion that I have to say? If not, let's go.
Start with Mark Douglas.
Yes.
Kevin Proleski?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Ronnie Tucker, Raymond?
Yeah.
Don't get him.
Yes. Uh, personnel, I'll take that, right? So we just, you know, went through our personnel agenda, we reviewed our current openings. Um, you will notice two individuals I want to mention who's played a strong role in our district over the last few years. Our instructional coaches um have both received administrative jobs. So one will be moving to a district over in Pennsylvania as an administrator and the other will be moving to a district in Hunter County as an administrator. So they've done an awesome job for us the last two years, obviously we prepared them well because they both were successful in getting administrative jobs. So we're evaluating those two positions and looking at next steps as far as, you know, how we will fill those positions. Uh, we also have an opening, as was mentioned before, special education need right now at middle school location. So we're hoping to fill that within the next couple of weeks. Um, and then we also have a STEM opening at our elementary school. Um, unfortunately, the teacher that we had hired um had resigned unexpectedly, so uh we are looking to fill that as well. Then we spent some time talking about substitute nurses and specifically evaluating our um daily pay rate compared to other districts. So my office actually did some comparisons and what we found is that we were below some of the other area districts. We were currently, our rate of pay was one seventy five per day for a nurse. Most of the other districts around us were two hundred, so we are asking the board to bump that up to two hundred tonight and approve that as a new per diem rate for the school year. And then we also have on our agenda um job descriptions for head day, head night custodian, as well as a few minor changes that we made to our sick bank agreement that we had with. Um, our South Hunter Regional Education says, which is.
Okay, with that, um, can I have a motion to approve items A and three? Ever minute. Oh, it may. Um, so move by Michael, second by, second by Kevin, thank you, any discussion on on the motions? I will just note that Shannon Gallagher and I are not related. Although there's a lot of guys out there, comments, common is cow crap overnight, so yeah. Uh, sorry. True, especially if you go to the Donald. About every third person is, yeah. Um. Any other discussions? Uh, I will, I will just take one, one note, now we are hiring, rehiring tonight our baseball coach from my assistant Ben Donahue. Ben uh was a coach here last year, did a fantastic job, very committed guy. Um, my son had him to coach and really enjoyed him. Uh, he is a teacher at Ridge High School, which is in Basking Ridge, so it is an hour, it's a good hour away. He is the director of their program for autistic kids there and his schedule changed and he didn't think he would be able to do the coaching, which is why he stepped down. But he called me, he had, after a month of the school year, he was very excited to say, thought he would like to come back and he reapplied for the open job. And so there was interviews, I know that multiple candidates applied, but uh Mr. Miller is the one who makes that decision and then Mr. Suzo. And uh, so I am excited that he is coming back, he is a quality person who loves to do. Um, any other comments? One last.
Starting with Kevin Proleski?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Mike Douglas?
Yes.
Ronnie Tucker, Raymond?
Yeah.
And Gallagher?
Yeah. Our curriculum and technology. I could do that, alright. Um, so we, Vince first started out, a lot of technology, especially over the summer to get everything up and running at our new school building. Um, a brand new network and firewall within the entire district. Um, all of our security system now up and running, obviously at our new elementary school. So a lot of that took a lot of time and effort and a big thanks to all of our tech folks. Parent Square and updating Parent Square and releasing that to all of our parents, which is now up and running. Uh, we have a new website that's tied to that. Um, and obviously, you know, all the work that we did at all of course, we need a year, so it was a very busy time for our technology department. We also talked about some changes to our program of studies. Um, and then we spent some time too really talking about, you know, library and media center and what that's going to look like. Uh, when we open up the five eight building and obviously it will look different than it does at an elementary school. Uh, so we'll be sharing more information about that with parents as we get closer, when we release our new schedule for the five eight building and kind of what the media center will look like at the, at the middle school level. Uh, and then we just did a preliminary look, as I mentioned before, we did just receive our NJSLA um state assessment scores. So Jane Allen just did a preliminary review, so we can kind of see where we were in each grade level. And then we'll be giving a formal presentation to the public and the board at our October board meeting.
There's nothing, there's nothing to move with the program committee, I would note that parents will be getting their individual students NJSLA results in the mail. Some of those are supposed to be mailed by the end of the month. So you, parents will be receiving those late September, early October, and you will have those before the district does its presentation on the aggregate scores. And sort of how we're trying to make it a bit. Um, so with that, let's go to the policy.
Thanks, Jim. So the policy committee did not meet last month, so there's nothing to break forward on at first read. We have four items for six, three, three policies, one regulation. The first policy is fifty five thirty on student suicide prevention. We did have a robust dialogue over the month on some changes to that. One of our board members, Ronnie, reviewed it very carefully and raised a question about clarifying whether or not there were any staff that have contact with students that would not be trained. We did discuss that briefly last month and it is the practice of the district to provide training to all staff on an annual basis with suicide prevention, about suicide prevention. New teachers in fact receive that as part of their onboarding process, so they don't ever go for a year without having appropriate training. However, to make sure that that is abundantly clear that the district's practice, we have added language to the policy that all staff who have regular and direct contact with students. Including but not limited to teaching staff uh and other folks who are required under the relevant code section will receive that training. In line with that, we were also reviewing the duty to warn and who has the duty to warn. As it stands, the policy places the duty to warn where, uh, that it to warn where a student has communicated clearly identifiable threat of serious physical harm against themselves. To individuals who are required to be trained. Wanting to make sure however that that that. That action, that warning is encouraged by all staff members. We are adding language to the policy that even staff members who are not required to complete suicide prevention training program are urged to warn and protect. When the appropriate circumstances arise, so that's been added. And thirdly, a suggested change, and this is actually not before us tonight, but we will be talking about it at the next meeting. A corresponding change to the regulation, regulation fifty three fifty having to do with notification that upon receiving recommendations from. The emergency unit principal or Jessica Lee will immediately, what it said was initially that they had to meet with the parents, we're going to change that to contact. And we'll talk about that a bit more detail next month, but wanted to recognize that we had holistically reviewed the policy and the regulation, even though we weren't, the regulation was not immediately classified. The second policy that we're moving forward is the emergent, I'm sorry, I should stop, are there any questions related to those changes? The second policy that we're moving is eighty four twenty. The second policy that we're moving is eighty-four twenty, that is the emergency crisis situations. That really was, um, it's a mandated change. It focuses on our special needs population and ensuring they have meaningful and appropriate participation in fire and safety drills. Uh, for example, early, early notification at the elementary school level. And the second call it, or the third policy and regulation are firearm, related to firearms and weapons. These are mandated changes and even though there are significant rewrite, there are really a rewrite to make sure that these sections are in coordination with changes that have been made to statutes and administrative codes, uh, from the, um, from the, uh, the state, from the state statutes. So there's a slight change in the title of that from weapons to weapons and firearms, but otherwise no meaningful changes.
All right, good. So with that, we'll need a margin to, uh, approve, uh, those four, three policies and the regulation on the second reading. One move by Ronnie, and a second by, second by Michael. And discussion on the policy and the regulation. Make a clear explanation of all of them. Uh, if there is no, uh, questions or discussion, then this is.
Second, Mike Strauss?
Yes.
Ryan Dennis?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Ryan Todd, Raymond?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so a lot of the things that we discuss in school, school and community naturally go to the superintendent's update. So, um, as Tony, um, said earlier, the climate survey report was something that we reviewed. And we talked about how those tie directly to the district goals. Um, as we address any areas of concern that were reported. We also reviewed a report from On Course regarding students leaving the district. Um, and said that because this had, um, a lot of information and the, the report that we were looking at also included families that had moved out of the district, that we wanted to look at that again with a little bit more, um, categorization and, um, so we'll be looking at that again in the future. Um, we talked about the community input sessions regarding the pre-K program and, um, exploring uh, potential focus group with Spanish-speaking families to cover this and any other relevant topics. And we talked about the fifth and sixth grade middle schoolers and how there's a change in, because of the change in the transition periods that some of the, the ceremonies that those kids normally would have experienced at, at things like graduation may not happen. So what are some things that we can do to have meaningful, um, celebrations for the, those kids as we're in this unique year of transition? And that was it. Nothing to me. Any questions? Is this Jim?
Any questions or discussion on the school and community? For. Okay, um, so under routine information items, I don't believe we have a hip report to move to see this real view. Uh, we have, it's too early at the school, so there's not any fire drills. And, um, there is a enrollment, uh, document that contains our enrollment, which is saved on the website. Roughly the documents for the board meeting. That brings us to the second period of public comment. Uh, once again, um, we open the floor. If you have something you'd like to bring before the board, um, please come up and, uh, be tough. Does anyone have something they'd like to bring before the board this week? Do we have anyone online? Okay, with that, I will then, uh, close the period of public comment. Um, but, um, there is no need to go into an executive session this evening. So we've already done that once tonight, so, uh, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Eight forty-four PM by Ronnie. Thank you. Second, second by Kevin. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?